Hello and welcome to another episode of A Fresh Perspective with Jeff Charles with your favorite conservatarian Jeff Charles, where we choose truth over narrative and principles over politics. And I've got, I've got a very special guest for you guys today, but before I get into everything, remember to like this, share this and hit that subscribe button. That way you'll be notified whenever I upload a new interview, which I do every Wednesday and Friday evening at seven o'clock Eastern time. So this man has been on my program before and he told a wild, 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 wild story about what's happening in the Round Rock School District, which is about, which is, which is just north of Austin, where I am. So I wanted to bring him back because there's been some new developments. It's been, it's been a while since we've talked, but I want to introduce Mr. Jeremy Story, the founder of Campus Renewal and Every Student Sent, and also the chaplain for the Texas Republican Party. Cause yeah, we, we know they need Jesus. So
We all do.
I'm glad to have you back, brother. It's, it's sounds already like things have gotten even crazier. But before we get into all of that, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, about your ministry and everything else?
Sure. My name is Jeremy. I, I've served in various ministry capacities for about 30 years. Mostly all those centered around college students. I've served on a bunch of national boards, like I've served on the National Day of Prayer Board for the National Day of Prayer, for Intercessors for America, which is the largest organization that prays for the government, several million people a month interacting with that organization. Other things, I helped start the Collegiate Day of Prayer many years ago, which is now covered every college campus in the country in prayer with all different churches and organizations across America. And, and just really been involved in the education sphere from a, from a student perspective and from dealt with professors and students and all that kind of thing for a long time. Basically ever since I graduated college. Have seven kiddos. So three of them are in college themselves. Four are still in the public school system. And then what else? I've served as the chaplain of the Republican Party of Texas. And very important, we're about to have a new legislative session. And very important, because I think there's strong appetite in this legislative session for tremendous amounts of education, not just reform, but, but revolutionizing how we think about education. I think that's important. I think that's one of the things that COVID season has shown us. Yeah. And shown, shown us, meaning the public, every school in our state, it feels like, or at least every school district, many of them are, are running lower in their enrollment figures than they ever have. Yep. And it has to do, I think, a lot with COVID opening people's eyes to the status of our public education system.
Yeah. I mean, especially, I mean, with the quality of education and also the indoctrination efforts. I mean, I'm not surprised. I mean, public school across the board enrollment is going down. Guess what's going up? Private school enrollment, charter school enrollment, homeschooling. That's all going up. So there's definitely a reason for that.
COVID was a big part of it because people might say, well, why is that? Well, for those that don't know, I mean, many of your audience is probably well informed and they already know. But of course, what COVID did is it, it forced public education in most places for a while to be virtual. And so all of a sudden, the content that was a bit in the, the actions that were a bit hidden before began to be pushed into the living rooms of every person across our state. And what that did is that began to cause people to ask further questions. And those questions led to other questions. And then those questions led to public information requests. And the next thing you know, people are finding out about things that they just never fully knew as much about that went on all the time. And, and they found out that they didn't agree with a lot of those things. And they didn't think that those were good ideas. And what was surprising to many, many, many parents across our state, I believe, is that as they began to object to things they thought would be, you know, a normal thing to object to, they were instead painted as radicals. And oftentimes these school boards and sometimes the school districts themselves and administrators would refuse to change, would dig in their heels. And then parents voted with their feet and they moved their kids out of the district.
Yeah, these domestic terrorists, you know?
And we saw that on the federal level, right? I mean, as we lead into the story that you're, you're, you're wanting to dialogue with me about on the federal level, you had Biden and his administration, essentially our attorney general collaborated with a private entity, which is the National Association of School Boards, made it look like the National Association of School Boards was calling parents terrorists, when in actuality it originated within the Biden administration and they leveraged a nonprofit to, to make it seem like that was the initiating factor and they were responding to it. But in actuality, it was the administration who initiated, they levered the nonprofit who then they wanted to use as a tool so that they could say what they wanted to say, the administration. And what did the administration say? Well, the attorney general wrote a letter calling parents, me, others, basically terrorists. Yep. And said, not only that, that they wanted to use the Patriot Act against those terrorists, which of course is the same act that we used to get rid of Osama bin Laden and, and the likes of folks who blew up the Twin Towers. So basically our government said, not only are you equivalent to those people, but we will treat you as such under the law with the Patriot Act. And what is your crime? Going to your local school board meetings, speaking up and disagreeing with the public educators. That does not make you a terrorist, but unfortunately that is the narrative that our federal government and even some of our states across the country tried to foist upon our nation.
Yep. Yep. And, and here's the thing. I mean, we know that corruption happens at the federal level. We hear about it all the time. It's, you know, we pay attention to it. State level too, maybe to a lesser degree, we were aware of it, but it happens all the time. But what we're talking about is an example of corruption at the local level. And this is very important because the government that is closest to you can do the most good for you and it can do the most damage to you. The president can't do as much to you as your, as in general can't do as much as your local government, which is why we should be focusing locally. So I'm going to kind of set the stage here and kind of, we can pick up where we left off because this story has been ongoing. And Jeremy, after I say this, if you want to fill in any blanks, feel free, because I may not remember everything. But there was an issue. I mean, I know there were several issues in Round Rock School District. A lot of it had to do with a lot of these far left progressive, so-called progressive ideas being infused into the school. But there was also an issue with who they chose as the superintendent. And I can't remember where he was prior to Round Rock, but there were some issues that people brought up. But the city or the council, or I'm sorry, the school board basically made the decision to hire him behind closed doors and just kind of dropped it on everybody when they're not supposed to do that. That's a violation of Texas law. We discussed that because they're supposed to be having these meetings and these, yeah, these meetings in public so that people can ask questions and they can know what's going on. They didn't do that. And it turns out this guy had a lot of issues. If I remember correctly, going so far as even to using the, the school police to bar somebody from the previous district that he was at because she was expressing her opinions. Turns out that this guy was also a kind of a creep, had a mistress, you know, within the school district here in, here in Round Rock, I believe.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. She, she lives in Austin, but yes, when he, he had, and he had had this mistress even when he was down in the Donna ISD. Donna ISD is the district he worked at previously, which is a border district on a small border town here in Texas. And, and this relationship that he'd have with this woman up in Austin, he had already had and was having while he was down in Donna ISD. His wife, ostensibly the one, there's two wives on record and the legal records, believe it or not. But the one that he claims is his wife is in Houston and she had not moved with him to Donna ISD. No one down there seemed to ever see her. What they instead saw was this other lady. And, and so yes, this relationship predated when our district hired, Round Rock ISD hired him in June of last year, June of 2021. And, and so, yeah. And so did the, the other incident, like you described. One of the things that the parents were concerned about, and I was too, when they were considering hiring Mr. Hafed Aziz, which is the name of our superintendent, they, that he had in May, they were considering hiring him in June. And in May, he had issued a protective order through his local school district police force in Donna ISD and served that protective order through his local police force at a woman's front door, a 58-year-old Hispanic grandmother who shared the video with me. And basically it said to her, you can't come on campus for two years. No trial, no, no, nothing like that. Just an order. You can't come on the campus for two years without my permission, was exactly what the order basically says. If you were to summarize it, what was her crime? She had been trying to expose corruption that he was a part of. And it was in particularly one of his friends. And so the response was, oh, well, we'll just kick you out. So you can't even come to board meetings and let's use the police to do so. So we were a bit concerned because this was all on tape and we didn't want this in our district that we'd seen he had this history of abusing the police. Little did I know that that would become me. Yeah. And, and worse than that woman ever had. And, and so that's really where the story begins.
Yeah. So people like you started speaking out and I can't remember the name of the, of the other person, the other guy who had the same issue.
Dustin Clark.
Dustin, Dustin Clark. That's right. I mean, and there's a video of you speaking at the school board meeting and they're trying to shut you down and they get the police to literally lift you off the ground and carry you out. Yeah. Just because you were
I don't think they actually got me in the air, but they did drag me out. Yes, that's absolutely true. Yeah. Against my will, dragging me. So your feet kind of dragged across the floor. Thankfully, I don't think they lifted me up, but they did drag me.
It looked like you were like floating.
Well, I laugh because it's so horrible. I mean, it's basically, yes. I mean, the, the short version of that is I was speaking in a lawfully admitted public time at my time, was not yelling, was not cussing, was not threatening, none of these things that they try to say people do. I was not doing those things. And the, they basically ordered two of the district, school district police officers to grab me from behind. I didn't even realize they were coming from behind, but they grabbed me from behind and drug me out of the room while I was speaking. What was my crime? My crime supposedly was disorderly conduct with intent to disrupt the meeting. That, that's what they ended up charging me with 30 days later. And we can talk about how that happened, but basically the day that the incident itself, just a quick refresher, as I walk up to the stand because I'm called to it by the board president, her name is Amy Weir. And before I could speak a word, she says, Mr. Story, I believe what you're about to speak is, is, is not germane to the topic at hand on the agenda. You may not say that, you know, or basically along those lines. And I say, Ms. Weir, would you give me an opportunity to demonstrate what I'm about to say is completely relevant to the resolution on, on the agenda? She says, no. I mean, I laughed because it's so horrible. And so I said, I maintain my composure. I said, so Ms. Weir, are you saying I cannot demonstrate whether this is germane or not? And she says, well, no, I mean, yes. And the moment she said yes and fluctuated, I said, okay, I'll begin. And then what happened was there were probably 70 speakers that night. It was a very hot night because everyone was talking about security and masks and oversight of the superintendent and a variety of things. And so there were only two resolutions on the agenda. It was a special meeting. And so I began to read one of those resolutions. I was the only person that entire night out of all those speakers that ever read either one of those resolutions. But yet I was the only person that night that they hauled out for quote, being non-germane. So I'm reading the resolution. She lets me go for about a minute. And then I say, and the, the resolution is all about public safety, concern for students and safety of students, safety of parents, safety of community members. It talks about oversight of the superintendent. And I'm quoting all this, right? Right. And I say, well, I don't believe that you're concerned about safety. I don't believe this is authentic or oversight of the superintendent, because you're sitting next to a man whom you know has a protective. And the next word out of my mouth was going to be order, a protective order against them for family violence. Because at that point, he had been served a protective order at our school district headquarters. And I had a record of it. And the board members were acting as if they didn't know that when they absolutely did. And the reason why they were trying to stop me from speaking was because the, one of the reasons they knew that is I had emailed them five different times preceding that meeting and had given them information and, 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 you know, emailed them the protective order and all sorts of things. So they knew it. And then that's why they knew what I was going to speak about. And that's why they didn't want me to speak. And that's why they tried to shut me down. And so when I, I maintained my composure and continued to speak, the moment I used the word protective, literally I said the word protective and she slammed her gavel down a bunch of times, just started banging it. You could see it on the video and yells, that's inappropriate. You can't say that. She waves her, you know, her hand as she's yelling, the, the superintendent kind of slightly nods his head like this. And next thing I know, two cops are grabbing me from behind, school district cops whom report to the superintendent. And they drugged me out of the room. They, they then also escorted me out of the school building and I left. And that was that. I then filed police reports. The local sheriff would not take the police report. The, the, all the entities, the city police would not take it. So I ended up filing it. They told me to file it with the school district police, which I did right afterwards. Followed it with the Assistant Police Chief, Chief of Police. Long story short on that is he ended up getting back to me basically saying he couldn't investigate it because it was against two high level officials. It was against his boss and the school board and the superintendent. And he wouldn't, and he referred me to the other policing agencies. At that point, I had also filed with the county attorney and I recorded all these conversations. And this is
They were giving you like the runaround, weren't they?
Exactly. Yeah. It's all going on in this 30-day period between when this occurred and when they arrest me. So they don't do anything. They don't, they don't file any warrants. They don't file any, anything, nothing until September 17th. September 17th, which is the day they arrested me, they file for a warrant, they file a false affidavit full of falsehoods. They get a warrant, they get an exception made at the local jail to put us in jail because COVID policy said you shouldn't put our level of misdemeanor in the jail. And, and they mobilize five cop cars, sheriff's cars, they mobilize the sheriff, our local Democrat sheriff, and they send, I believe, two cars to my house and three cars to Dustin's house simultaneously on a Friday afternoon at about 4:30.
Although to, to be fair, you were engaging in domestic terrorism. So I mean, I'm surprised they didn't send more.
Yeah. That's the point is like, I wasn't, you know, I basically spoke at a board meeting and they did nothing until, you know, I wouldn't stop continuing, right? Meaning I continued after that board meeting, I started filing police reports. And then on September about fifth or sixth, I filed a legal grievance against the school district, which is not a lawsuit. It's a formal process in Texas that any parent can file. And I began that. Well, they 86 that, that, that grievance. I, they wouldn't, they didn't respond. And so finally I said, why have y'all not responded like you're supposed to, to a legal grievance? They said, and this is September 16th, they say, Mr. Story, oh, we found your legal grievance. The reason why we haven't responded is because it went to our spam folder.
Yeah, I remember you telling me that. Oh, that was so like, like you know, it didn't go to spam. Like
No. Yeah. And what's interesting is so September 16th, they say this to me, well, now, well, we have officially received your grievance, right? Because they found it, you know, even though I'd actually submitted it and I have proof that I submitted it way earlier in September. Well, what did they do on the 17th, the very next day? They arrest me. Right. You know, and not only did they arrest me, but they go through the whole process in that day and make exceptions and they do the same to Dustin. And, and, and they do it, you know, basically by Friday at 4:30. And the reason was they were trying to hold us over the, over the weekend, right? Because there were no judges because they all take off, right? So there's no judges to bail you out. And, and, and since we had no records and we hadn't, they, they knew they couldn't hold us there. They were just being punitive. And the only reason why we got out earlier than Monday was because the community rallied and a bunch of great folks in our community held a prayer rally outside the jail and wouldn't leave. And, and finally about Saturday, a little bit around noon or so, they let us go with no bail money, you know, no nothing to say, you know, get out of here, you know? And it's because they knew they were in the wrong. Once people started realizing, and this came in the light of day, they still know to this day they're in the wrong. And it's only gotten worse since in terms of what trouble they're in.
So what I want to highlight here, and I think I did this last time we talked, but for people watching this, this story sounds like something you'd see in a movie. It does. Or maybe like the FBI doing something like this. Or maybe the government in like a big city like Los Angeles or New York City. No, this happened in a suburb. People used the state, they used men with guns to carry this man out of a school board meeting just for saying things that they didn't want said. They later sent men with guns to his home and the home of Dustin Clark. And you didn't even get to how, how they did with your kids because they, they did this in front of your kids. They, they tried to manipulate your kids.
They, they, they threatened, in my case, they, the, the, one of the sheriff's deputies threatened to arrest my child if I did not come out. Yeah. Of the home. And with Dustin's kids, they, his wife wasn't around and they basically handed him off to a neighbor. It was either that or the CPS.
That's right.
And his wife was on the phone saying, please let me get home. I'm only about five minutes away. Please, please, please. And apparently Dustin was such a threat, you know, they surprised him at his home. I mean, he wasn't, but the point is that they couldn't wait a few minutes for his wife to get home and they had to send his kids over to a neighbor, right? I mean, this is, this is what, and what was our crime? What, what have we done? I mean, we'd spoken out at a school board meeting. And in my case, you know, I can't speak for Dustin, you know, he's not here, but I can tell you the details of my case. I didn't do anything wrong. I was wronged. I was interrupted. My civil rights were violated, which is why we have a lawsuit against them in federal civil court now.
Good. Good. But, but because I want, I want people to be aware, this doesn't, I can't stress this enough. This does not just happen at the state and federal government. It could be happening in your city. There could be all kinds of stuff going on that, that you don't know about. If it can happen in Round Rock, it can happen anywhere. So
Give you some updates on what's happened since then.
So yeah, I want to, so what's been happening since then?
It's gotten worse. I mean, it's crazy. First off, our district, the super, the super, sorry, the police chief resigned. The assistant police chief resigned. Okay. There, there are seven school board members, two of whom have been, they're strong conservatives and they've been advocates for stopping all this nonsense. Right. And five of whom are malfeasant, right? Of those five, one of those has resigned now. So now we're down to four malfeasant board members and a school district that for a while had no police chief, had no assistant police chief. It was just like chaos. And so it's, it's been crazy. It's gotten with the superintendent, the Texas Education Agency got involved. They sent their second in command under Jeff, under, under, under Mike Morrell, sorry, Mike Marath, Jeff Cottrell, who was the second in command and sent him to our district, worked with a monitor that they appointed for our district to watch over our board, which is a disciplinary action. Okay. That monitor said, look, you guys need to hire an independent investigator to investigate the superintendent and you need to put the superintendent on leave. Our school board, those five resisted the efforts of the two and tried their darndest to basically tell the TA, they didn't have to do what they, what the TA wanted them to do. They tried to say they were going to subpoena the TA. It looked, it seems to me, I wasn't in those meetings, but it seems like they, they threaten the TA from what I can tell. And so the TA responded by what I can only guess is just basically saying, that's not how things work here. And, you know, we're in charge. And so basically however that conversation went, it went, I know they pushed back on them because I could see what comments they were making publicly in board meetings, but the TA basically won finally. And, and so our, our school board members came out in public in their meeting and said, well, we don't really want to hire the investigator. We're, you know, the state is treating us like children, but we'll go ahead and hire one. I mean, that's the kind of comments they made. So they reluctantly hire this investigator. The investigator does the investigation, reports back to the school board, a full report, right? And we now know that that report said basically that the things that I was claiming were true. And that this superintendent should not be reinstated. That's what we now know the report said. But she turns in this report, I don't remember when it was, she turns it in around, around February or so. And the board does everything, those five members of the board, not all seven, the two are fighting to try to get this exposed. Yes. But those five try to do everything they can to not officially receive that report. Because they knew once they received it, people would immediately public information request it, which is what I did. So they hold off for about three months of parliamentary procedure of officially receiving the report. Once they finally received the report, IPIR it that night. Okay. That was like March, when I think IPIR it or somewhere around there. They basically refused to give it to me. And I have to take it all the way up to the attorney general. So in June, finally, six months after this process began, we finally get what's in that report. And it says exactly what I told you, that, that what I was saying was true. And that this guy should not have been reinstated. But guess what they do in that six months? About, I don't remember the exact time. I want to say it was March. I have to go back and look at the date. But in the middle of that time, when they're holding off this report that they all know what it says, they actually vote to reinstate the superintendent. And they quote a lawyer that in the meeting, I was in that meeting that day. They said, a law, here's a letter from a lawyer. They don't say who, just a lawyer. And they read this letter that says, nothing to see here. Mr. Aziz has no charges going to be filed against him, no investigations pending or whatever. Nothing to see here. And then they all go, okay, guys, well, you know, it's fine. This lawyer says so. Raise your hands to vote. And they, let's reinstate it tomorrow morning. Okay, great. That's what they do. Right? Well, I find out that this lawyer, and I exposed this, was Hafed Aziz's own personal lawyer. They're actually
You've got to be kidding me.
No, you could not make this up. They, they basically quoted his, his own lawyer to justify rehiring him, not telling the public that it was his own lawyer at the time. And 86ed the report from the TA investigator for as long as they could. They knew the whole time that it was telling them not to do this. Meanwhile, the superintendent sues the school district for civil rights abuses, claiming that I think some sort of discrimination against him was because he's Middle Eastern. He's not Middle Eastern, he's North African rather, which I guess you could consider that Middle Eastern, but it's, he's from North Africa. And, and so, you know, it's, it's, it's a circus. And in the middle of all this, the police chief, you know, is resigning, the assistant police chief is resigning. You know, Yvaldi happens. We have no police chief. Our school board wasn't meeting for the Safety and Security Committee that they're supposed to have by state law. They, they weren't having it for like a year. And all the while, they're putting out press releases throughout this. And I, I'm not going in sequential order here, but just trying to give your viewers the idea. Saying things like, you know, the public's being disruptive, you know, we don't have any evidence that there's anything going on with Aziz, you know, all this stuff, just falsehoods, absolute complete falsehoods aimed at painting me and Dustin and others with us as if we are crazy and talking, we don't know what we're talking about. And that, you know, we're just being disruptive and that's why they can't, you know, do their stuff. It's crazy. It gets crazier than that. You want to hear something else?
Yeah.
So in the middle of that 30-day
I actually brought my popcorn.
I mean, I've gotten to where I can talk about it without emotion to some degree because I've talked about it enough, but it's, it's been a nightmare.
Yeah, you've been through a lot. Yeah.
The, the, they, they pulled me off the stand in late August. They arrest us in September 17th, 30 days later. There's an intervening board meeting in between those two. And it's a normal board meeting, which means you can talk about in Texas, in a normal board meeting, you can talk about whatever you want. Okay. So at that first board meeting, they said, well, you can't talk because you're not on topic, which wasn't true. I was absolutely on topic. And they were, in fact, other people in that same board meeting talked about the same thing that weren't hauled off. They were, they were women and they didn't, they weren't perceived, I was perceived to, to have the information, right? And, and the other thing, someone else, like in the middle of the meeting, went off about Ted Cruz and where he sends his kids to school. Why that was considered germane? Because that person got no reprimand, right? But, but I talk about our own superintendent and what he has done to another woman and considering safety issues. And for some reason, that's non-germane, but somebody else yammers on about Ted Cruz's children. Another person yammered on about people falling off planes in Afghanistan, right? These have nothing to do with the resolutions, but those people were not reprimanded, right? They were certainly, they were not only, they weren't, they weren't reprimanded, they weren't hauled off by the police and they weren't arrested 30 days later. The school district, these board members are in a lot of trouble. And so is the school district because they acted way beyond the means of a normal board member. And backed them up. And so in the, in the middle of all this, before they arrest me on September 14th, there's a board meeting, a normal one. And they know, hey, we can't stop them this time because we can't even claim the germane issue. So they take the same two police officers and they position them at the front doors of the board meeting outside in the hall.
You're telling me that, yeah.
And this is all on video. Everything I'm saying is on video or on tape for the most part. So they're out, they're out in front of the doors. They take all the chairs out of this auditorium that has a capacity of over 300 people, except for 18 chairs. And they spread those 18 chairs across this big auditorium. And they tell people unless you sit in one of these government approved chairs, you may not be in this room. So they say, well, it's about security. Oh, well, it's about COVID. They, they don't really know. That night, they're just making it up. Later they came up with it as about COVID, which makes no sense. Cause it means, as a parent, if I walked into the room and stood at the back wall and I had eight feet of distance or 10 feet of distance between me and more distance in between those chairs, some reason I'm uniquely going to communicate COVID or, you know, have COVID because I'm standing against the wall as opposed to in a plastic government approved chair. It gets even crazier because some people got when they were going to do this. I don't even know how they found that out. But got when, maybe they, I don't know how it was, maybe they heard and then went back home and got them. But some people, a few people brought their own lawn chairs and sat them down spaced apart equally to the government approved chairs. And the board president is on tape as saying, unless you sit in one of the chairs we have put here, you cannot be in those chairs. And we're kicking you out. We're going to have the police carry you out of here. There's a kid on the floor next to her mother, sitting next to her mother going, you know, you know, because she's there to observe the board meeting. And there's the board presidents on, on tape going, you have to get out of, you know, get out off the floor. You can't sit there next to your mother. We're going to have the police haul you out of here. Because you're not in a government approved chair. She was literally claiming that people were violating the penal code because she could order that they have to sit in a certain type of chair that is approved by the government. That's what she was saying on tape. Meanwhile, I'm out in the hall with a whole bunch of parents who are not, who have not been allowed in with these two cops, district cops, the same two that hauled me out, standing at the front doors. They're not answering any questions. They're playing the silent game. I'm asking questions. So I stepped to the front of the parents and I say, why are you blocking the doors to a public board meeting? No answer. No answer. Um, can we go in? No answer. Um, you know, who told you to do this? No answer. Do you mind if, can we walk around you? No answer. Can I speak to your supervisor? Who I noticed, by the way, at this point, thirty minutes worth of questioning. That the supervisor, the assistant police chief, whom I have filed the report with and who has told me he will not investigate, is on the other side of those doors staring through them, watching this happen.
Yeah, this is disgusting.
So they're, and they're not answering. One of the cops starts surfing social media. I was, I don't know what he was doing. I couldn't tell, but he's surfing something on his phone, just completely ignoring us. So I finally say, okay, sirs, the board meeting has started. There's actually a couple of open seats in there. You're randomly letting people in because that, while I'm having this conversation, I don't even know how they knew, but certain people are letting in, other people are not letting in. We have no reason, no, no rhyme or reason why, because there's not, there's no reason given. There's a couple of seats that are open. I say, look, I'm going to walk in. That's a public board meeting. I respect law enforcement, gentlemen, and it's all on tape. I say this. I don't respect what you're doing right now, but I have no desire to in any way harm you or interact with you. I'm just going to walk around you. I'm going to put my hands behind my back, sirs. You're not answering me. I'm going to walk through. I tell them that. I try to walk through the door and they spring into action. They body block me. So I try to walk around the other guy because it's a double doors. Try to walk around him. He body blocks me. I then try to walk around again. And at which point, basically in the middle of it, one of them bear hugs me around a pole and cuts me in my back because the pole has a, a door latch on it. It cuts me because he's bear hugging me around it. And then the other guy, so I kind of back up from that. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of halfway realizing, oh my goodness, this is like happening in real life, you know? Uh, and, and so I tried to then go around the other guy. I'm trying to not touch them. But, and he instead takes his hand and shoves me down to the floor. I'm not arrested. Nothing happens. They resume back to the Queen of England stance and silence. And I call nine one one. At this point, the city police say, we can't do anything, Mr. Story. We told you, this is their jurisdiction. And I said, oh, no, no, no. I have an email from the assistant police chief who's watching all this, who said, I need to go to you guys because he can't deal with it. They say, you do. I say, yes, I send it to them. They say, we're coming, Mr. Story, because now we know we can have jurisdiction. The moment they say that, a few minutes later, the school board adjourned suddenly. Somebody tipped them off. They, they adjourn and they issue a press release saying, we, we, we can't, we, we had to adjourn because we couldn't conduct any business because people are being disruptive. But what they had actually done in the middle of all this is they had hauled Dustin Clark out the back door. Why? Because he objected when they illegally voted for a second tax increase while this was going on. And why had they done that? And why was it illegal? They didn't have enough votes for number one. And there's other reasons why it had gone above the ceiling that is the state ceiling on top of that. But they had, um, two of the board members, the two that have been trying to expose all this, Daniel Weston and Mary Bone, said, this is crazy. We're not staying in this board meeting. We will be arrested. This is wrong. And they leave the board meeting uh, in the middle of all this. So now there's only five people remaining and what those five decide to do is dang it, our enrollment is down. And, uh, so we got low tax dollars. We need to somehow fix this thirty million dollar deficit the, that we've got. So let's just increase the taxes. That's what they do while they're pinning me to the wall outside. And while they've drugged Dustin out the back door. And then you see that famous quote that Dustin yells as they drag him out the back door, you guys are communists. And all you see on the news is Dustin yelling, you guys are communists. But what you miss is that they're pinning me to the wall on the opposite side of the room, outside the board meeting. And they have just voted after two board members leave for a tax increase that's unlawful.
If the shoe fits, I mean, come on.
And so, and Dustin doesn't yell, you're communist until they are yanking him out the back door. This, uh, the other cops for the school district. And so, uh, it was horrible. Uh, and, and, and it has only gotten worse, as I said, as we progressed through the semester. Our district is down eleven percent in enrollment. Um, they decided that they would vote, uh, just recently to open it up to other school districts because I think they want our school district, they're trying to remedy their problem by sucking other people into their black hole. Um, the only problem is it hasn't fixed the enrollment. Last numbers that I saw this last week, they're down another three hundred students. So they opened it up to the public. They hired a, a company to promote, trying to get people to come into our district and they're actually still down further.
Wow.
Um, and yet all the while, these five board members, now four, are saying, oh, it's not us, you know, it's, it's the overall environment of the state and all this other thing. Um, they, they will not accept responsibility for any of their actions, uh, related to all this.
So is Hafed Aziz still superintendent at this moment?
Yes. So in fact, he's the only superintendent in the state of Texas who has an active investigation into him by the T E A and a protective order against him.
And so they're still investigating him?
Yes, the T E A is. At least last that I saw, yes, last, you know, the last several weeks. Um, but he definitely still has a protective order against him, at least that, unless that's changed recently somehow. But, uh, it's a permanent protective order. So I don't think that's changing.
Yeah.
Um, and, and my understanding is he's the only superintendent in the state of Texas in that state.
So, so let me ask you this, and I may have asked this last time too, but I mean, the question is even more pertinent now. Why are they going to such lengths to protect this guy and to keep him on? I mean, at this point, I would think he would just be more of a headache than he's worth, than he's worth. But they're basically willing to engage in illegal activity, to pretend like they're not receiving the report from the T E A, to go through all these lengths just to protect this guy when they could just replace him with someone else who isn't going to give him this level of drama. What is it about this guy that makes them want to protect him so badly?
That is a great question. That's a great question. Um, and I don't think anyone fully knows the answer. Uh, there are, there are, there are things that we know, um, in our suit that we attest to, and there's things that we, we uh, haven't tested to yet that we, we have evidence for. But basically it appears that they hired him, uh, by giving him preferential treatment ahead of time. So they violated the law to hire him, these, some of these five. Uh, they gave him his, the answers ahead of time in private meetings. It appears through some of the other things they did, that they actually had picked him out before they even started the process of vetting different candidates.
Right.
Um, so they, um, they violated a lot of laws to get him there, uh, and, uh, related to the Texas Open Meetings Act, that you're not allowed to do all this private stuff. They, they hit him in a back room the day they hired him and surprised everyone, pulled him out of the back room, uh, right after they hired him, uh, when he supposedly was being voted on, when you shouldn't know whether you're going to hire him. And so I think they were doing all this thinking they weren't going to get caught. And when I called him out on it, they thought, well, we'll take care of this guy. We'll do this and then we'll do this and then we'll do this. And then it got to this level to where they were in so deep, they, they, they're, it's, they're protecting each other at this point. Aziz is protecting them, they're protecting him. And the only way they get, they see that they could get out of this is if they stay together, right? Uh, and, and so in, in the middle of all this, uh,
They went past the point of no return, basically.
Yeah, because, you know, they thought, oh, well, we'll, we'll make Jeremy be quiet by telling him he's non-german. Oh, we'll make Jeremy be quiet by, you know, pulling all the chairs out. Oh, we'll make Jeremy be quiet by arresting him. Oh, but then Jeremy puts us on Fox News. We weren't expecting that one. And when Jeremy puts us on the media across the state and across the nation. And, and so it's gotten to such a place that they, because every time they've ratcheted up, I've said, look, I'm, I, I don't have a vendetta of any sort, but if you're going to ratchet it up and, and threaten me criminally, then I'm going to respond peace, I'm going to respond with, with legal process and peace, uh, to stop you. Because what you're doing is wrong. And so every time they've ratcheted it up, I've taken it to another level. Um, and I continue to tell them that if they want to keep fighting me on this legal case, we'll go all the way to the Supreme Court. And I'll take them to the media all the way. My, my, I've been very graceful that I have not gone above where they have gone. But every time they go beyond that, I just take it to another level. So for example, um, they recently in our legal case tried to get it dismissed by claiming, well, we ran this through the county. And we ran it by an independent magistrate. And so therefore it can't be a fourth amendment violation. Well, fine then, I'll show you all the evidence I have that the county's not independent and that you were collaborating with them and we'll bring the county into this, right? You, 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 you want to, you know, you want to point the finger at them? And you want to suck our county into this? Well, okay. My point is, is I don't want to ratchet it up, but they have ratcheted up. And if they continue to do so, I'll continue to do so because this is wrong.
They already escalated it to the maximum degree when they arrested you. I'm sorry. After that, I mean, for me, it'd be all bets are off. No, you're done.
Yeah, the moment you come to my house banging on my door and put me in jail for the first time ever in my life for something I didn't do. Uh, yeah, you've crossed, I mean, yes, to the public, you've crossed the line. And so I, the other thing that happened in the middle of all this, to answer that question you had just asked about, why might they still be digging their heels in? This woman, whom this superintendent Hafed Aziz had been in affair with, gets pregnant, uh, and notifies him in September that she's pregnant while all this is going on, right? Or actually notifies him, I think, sorry, not September, July. Uh, and, and so, um, so that's one of the dynamics I didn't mention on your show just now. And, and she's, she, she's pregnant. She is, uh, talking to him about dealing with that. He tells her, go get an abortion. He does this via text message, which is why we have record of it. She says, no, because she's Catholic. I don't think I want to do this. She starts realizing this guy is not who I thought he was, right? I mean, obviously she's made some mistakes, but she has been trying to make good decisions since. And so she says, I don't want an abortion. I, I want to, I want to have this child. He says, if you won't go get an abortion, I'll come to your house and do it for you. In other words, I'm going to assault you. Um, and she then gets very scared, goes to the school board, tries to say to the school board, can we talk? There's a problem. Those two school board members say, yes, let's talk and find out. The five say, no, basically, I'm summarizing.
Of course.
And instead of not just saying no, a few of those five go and tell the superintendent. And the superintendent then makes good on his promise and shows up at her house. So another hook in this is that several of those members of that board are actually indirectly complicit in an alleged assault.
Hmm.
And, um, and, and that resulted then in the protective order that is now against them, you see? And so, so they're protecting their own livelihood, their own, you know, whatever else, you know, because they were indirectly involved in what essentially was a crime. Uh, and so not, not to mention arresting someone that you shouldn't have arrested. And so, uh, I think they're power protecting right now, trying to, trying to, you know, hold on to each other, you know?
Yeah.
And then in school districts, if we just talk about across the state of Texas, these school districts in our state are your largest taxing authorities. Um, so the largest part of your tax bill, it's not the cities, it's not your county, it's your school district, not even the state, it's your school district. Uh, the alliance chair of your property tax bill goes to them. And so, uh, oftentimes they're sort of used as a piggy bank, unfortunately, and it affects the kids is what this is. You know, it, it essentially means that every dollar doesn't equal a dollar for the kids. You get a, a fraction of that dollar because you're siphoning off money to the people that process the bonds, the banks. I get significant money, you're siphoning off money for contractors that donate to foundations that are supporting the school district and then later get contracts that they shouldn't have got. Or that another person could have done more inexpensively and better, right? This happens all the time. It happens in our district, happens in other districts. And, and, and this tremendous vat of money in these communities gets abused. People get hired that shouldn't be hired is with high level administrator salaries. Uh, you know, deals are made with those people's relatives, you know, indirectly. Uh, I've seen it in our own district in this year. Um, and so when you control a superintendent, for example, because you got something on him, right? And you control the board lawyer, who's the person who decides what can be said in a board meeting a lot of times, right? And you control the administrator who, um, who does the contracts and, and, and basically presents to the board, here's the grade that this contractor gets for this bid. And I'd give him an A, you know, or whatever. You control a handful of people. My point is the PR director and the superintendent, of course, appoints all these people, right? You control those people that as a board or, or even as a private business people, person, you can control a significant amount of this money flow in and out of these school districts. And
Which means you have a lot of power.
Oh, tremendous. It's the largest municipal money flow in our state. So with a few people, you can indirectly control tremendous amounts of money. And that is oftentimes happening. And who loses? The students of our state, the kids, our future is who loses. Who wins? Administrators. Teachers don't win because teachers get, you know, piddly salaries and the administrators get huge raises. You know, our, our superintendent makes something like four hundred and some thousand dollars a year. Our teacher's got a five hundred dollar raise or something like that, you know, that was voted in. Whoop de freaking do. And so, uh, our administration budget has grown by like twenty-five percent or something like that. And the, the classroom budget has been miniscule comparatively. And so, this is the issue that we're facing across the state that needs to change. If we're going to have a future of public education. And I'm all for public education. I, I love seeing kids educated. That's what makes me so upset and that's why I've spoken out. Because this is not right for our future as a state. And, and what we've seen in Round Rock is, is, is an example of what oftentimes is going on in school districts. You got these drag shows, porno books, you got indoctrination of all kinds. It has nothing to do with academics.
Yeah.
You know, if parents want to indoctrinate their own kids into whatever, that's their business. You want to put it in the public school system and, and make it as if it's an academic endeavor? No, thank you. You know, uh, and, and so this, all sort of stuff is going on and it, bottom line is kids aren't getting educated. And, and we're falling behind. And we're wasting tax dollars of pretty much the largest expense in our state.
You know, I, I, at some point, I want to have a conversation with you about that specific topic because I know right now we're focused on your story, which, which is important, but I, I would guarantee you that most Texans don't even have no idea about what you just said. So I, I, I would like to maybe at another time later on, have another conversation about that. But why don't you tell us about your lawsuit? I wanted to get into that a little bit before we sign off. Like, yeah, tell us like the nature of the lawsuit and, you know, how the things are going. I know there's probably some things you can't say, but.
Sure. So we filed a lawsuit against the school district in May. Uh, took us a while to compile all the evidence and everything. It's a massive lawsuit for free speech violations. For First Amendment, free speech violations, First Amendment right to redress your government violations. Uh, Fourth Amendment, uh, unlawful search and seizure, Fourteenth Amendment violations as well. Um, all the things you've heard and, you know, you can extrapolate what those rights violations were.
Yeah.
Um, and so the school district responded, uh, they waited till the last moment and then they responded, uh, with a, uh, three or three different motions to dismiss. I would estimate they probably spent a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand on just writing these responses. Uh, they, they basically threw everything they could at it, you know, because they don't want this support. Uh, because then we get to depositions and disclosure where you can force them to disclose a lot of stuff. And they do not want that right now. They're doing everything they can. They hired three lawyers just for us. Uh, that are separate from their normal lawyers. They hired these got, these, the, these three lawyers. And they filed three motions to dismiss. Um, we then, uh, responded to each one of those motions to dismiss with twenty pages worth of further evidence and arguments independently to each one. So sixty pages there. And then we took our original lawsuit and expanded it. So everything they challenged us on, we just took it up to a whole nother level. And put more evidence and also implicated more, more people even. Um, and, and we'll continue to do that if they want to keep pushing us. And so when we did that, a federal judge responded and said, in light of our amended lawsuit and, and our responses basically in light of our amended lawsuit, that all of the school district's arguments were moot. And so their motions to dismiss were in a sense dismissed.
Good.
So, uh, so big win for us. However, I'm sure the school district will try to respond again. And try to do everything they can to keep this out of court. And so right now, what I need your viewers to do is to donate. Uh, because, uh, we've already raised about eighty thousand dollars. We need to raise probably another eighty thousand now because we realize the school district is going to do whatever they can.
At least they have tons of money. Yeah.
And we, uh, we want this to be a precedent. We believe this will be a precedent to stop school board abuse of parents, of parents and, and students. Uh, none of this money is going to me, not a dime. Goes to me or to Dustin. We're raising the money and we're using it to fight the legal battle. Uh, so it goes to our lawyers and our lawyers are deeply discounting everything. So, uh, because they're just as committed to this as we are, to seeing this, this stopped. And to see this become a banner case to stop this from ever happening in our state again, and hopefully our nation. Um, to stop this narrative, but we need to all join together. So if they go to rise for students, R I S E for F O R students.org, riseforstudents.org, they can see, um, the original lawsuit, they can see, um, pictures of Dustin and I, they can see a description of what's happened. Uh, and they can donate and it's, we've set up a nonprofit so that their donations are actually even tax deductible. Uh, and so, uh, we didn't have that originally, but we've now set it up, uh, so that donations can be tax deductible. And we need to raise another eighty thousand dollars. Uh, really, uh, to, to really make this case go forward. Um, and, and really be helpful for everybody. So riseforstudents.org and you can get a tax donation and you can stop these sorts of things. So if you're at home or at your work or you're listening to this wherever. And even if you listen to this months from now, we'll still need your help because the school is just, this is going to be a
It's going to be a long battle. Yeah.
And so, um, if you are saying, man, I listened to the story about what happened with Biden administration and I listened to what's happening across our education. This is how we fight it. We need to establish precedent to stop it. Did I start off wanting to do this? No, this was not some pre-planned thing. Trust me, I didn't, I don't even know how I could have predicted they would have arrested me because I think we were the first parents that were arrested by a school board in like Texas history or for a long time. Unfortunately, since then, a few others have been arrested too in different districts. But yeah, it's crazy. Uh, that's a whole nother story. But the point is, uh, and I don't know if they were put in jail, one of them I know was put in jail because I've visited them in jail. And her crime was holding up a poster that opposed, uh, critical race theory.
Yeah, that's domestic terrorism.
I, I don't even joke about it nowadays because when you joke about it, they use it against you, you know? They, they, they show that five minute segment or five second segment of what you said on the news. Oh, he believes.
And they try to make it look like, yeah.
Honestly, it's, it's ridiculous. It's lies, it's deceit. And the people that lose, yeah, are obviously parents. I spent time in jail. But the kids by the tens, hundreds of thousands in our state are losing and also across the country. By the tens, hundreds of thousands in our state are losing and also across the country with all these games. We need to educate kids and this, the stuff we are, I mean, why are we debating about crazy things like whether, you know? Um, uh, we should have a book that literally has pornographic pictures in it in your elementary school. Why, why is that a debate? Why is that a political issue? I don't care what party you're from, right? I mean, those magazines when I was growing up, things that had that sort of thing, they, they were at your local seven eleven behind a black paper or whatever. I don't know. And you had to have, you know, a twenty-one year old ID to get it. But now you can go to your elementary school and this is not exaggerated. You can check out these books for free.
Literally, yeah.
And, and in some cases, they're actually encouraged. And worse yet, when they're pointed out, you'd think people would go, oops, we made a mistake. We shouldn't have bought that book. Oh no, they fight you.
Yeah, they do.
They, they act as if this is some, uh, moral.
They make it look like you're the problem. Like they, they, they look at you like you're crazy. Like, no, no, you're the one putting pornographic material. In a library that is accessed by two, second and third graders and like, no, you're the ones who are crazy.
And they twist your words. So they'll say, oh, well, you're, you're wanting to ban books. Well, I don't know anybody who's a conservative. I mean, maybe there's some, I'm sure there's always fringe groups on either side, right? But that maybe really want to ban some books that we probably shouldn't. Uh, but most people are, are not talking about just wantonly banning books. They're talking about banning books. That literally depict children and doing sex acts, children doing sex acts. And then also like some of these books will, will thread that across like church camp. So they're also assaulting religion at the same time. They're doing it on purpose because they're trying to undermine. Basic morality that's been, that, that parents would teach. They don't like Judeo-Christian morality. And so they cross this gender craziness with, um, with also, uh, anti-religion, right? And it'll all be in the same book. I'm, I'm actually, I'm not going to tell you the name of the book because I don't want to promote it. But I'm actually telling you the story of a specific book that many school districts are fighting to keep in, in their elementary school libraries. As if this is education. Um, a, a, and, and in other places like CRT or diversity, equity, inclusion. I have spent, see, this is the other thing, they, they picked on the wrong person. What my nonprofit has done for thirty years, uh, or a little less than thirty years is. We go from campus to campus and we bring together Christians across race and denomination. So different types of churches. Different types of races to get them to work together. Their leaders, I have done this since I was eighteen years old. So I am the wrong person to accuse of being a racist, but yet they have. Oh, you're against Hafed Aziz. He's from Middle East and you must be, no, listen bud, I've traveled the whole state, the whole nation. Doing one thing, uniting people across race and denomination because I value diversity, but I don't value Marxism. And, and that's where they twist your words. And, and this CRT thing says, well, let's teach kids that there's systemic racism. And therefore if you are of a minority population, you can't be racist. If you are of a white population, you're, you're by definition racist.
Automatically an oppressor.
And, and the way you solve that is, is reprisal. That you, that basically is, is you, you have to go take back through legal means, money, resources, whatever. And give because in the past, something bad happened. That is Marxism. That's, that's, that's crossing race theory with socialism.
Yeah.
Putting it into something, you can call it CRT, you can call it DEI, you can call it new acronyms all you want. It's still wrong and it leads not to solving our racism crisis. It solves to exas, it creates and exacerbates it.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Against each other and class warfare, which is how we got the Communist Party in Russia.
Yep.
And, and so this is what they're trying to teach through these books in our classrooms through history. Uh, you know, uh, we have to stop this and it's not because we're a bunch of racists who want to ban books. It's, it's, in my case, I want to see diversity in our classrooms. But that is not the way to solve people who don't like each other because of their skin colors. That's the way to cause a worse problem. To cause race riots and cause people to suspect each other and hate each other. That is not God's plan for fixing diversity. And, and yet this is what teachers across our state are, are, are teaching through curriculum. You have curriculum providers. Um, uh, like one's called Apex Learning that I'm dealing with right now. And, and they on their website say, our whole focus is to make sure that we embed this idea in all of our curriculum, math. History, whatever. And then they sell it to these districts. For kids to consume. So I'm learning about school and then all of a sudden a video pops in that says, you know. If you don't believe that transgenderism is a good idea, well, you're, you're, you're. Yeah, you're, 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 there's a problem with you and, and you're equivalent to a slaveholder or something, you know, it's like, what? I mean. And so these are the sorts of things we're dealing with in the classrooms. Uh, and it's, it's, and, and if you believe that across the, the nation that you think these things should be changed, I'd encourage you to give to our. Legal fund because we will hopefully be one of the nails in the coffin of this sort of nonsense. Of school boards oppressing parents and twisting their words and using PR press releases and stuff. To make parents look bad when many of them are just saying very basic common sense things, you know? And, and, and I, and I hope we can do that. And we can do that as we stand together across our state and across our nation. And people have given to this lawsuit from all over the nation. So.
Awesome. Great. Well, I wish we could talk more about this, but we'll, we'll have to do this again. But, uh, uh, before we sign off, why don't you let everybody know where they can find you?
Uh, sure. Rise for students dot org is the website for the lawsuit. You can get information about it, see some of it. We'll be updating also our responses that we sent in. Those are not there yet, but we'll put them up there. Rise for students dot org. You can donate there. Um, if you want to learn about, uh, our ministry or whatever, which has not been really the subject of this interview, and I'm not representing. Our ministry here, this is just me talking personally. You can find that at campus renewal dot org or every student sent dot org. Um, all those are things that, that I'm involved with. And, uh, of course, uh, the Republican Party, I served them as a volunteer as our state chaplain. Um, because I, I want us all to be held to moral standards, including Republicans. It's not just a, you know, I don't care whether you're Republican or Democrat. We all need to be held to the same, uh, uh, standards. And I'll call out Republicans if, if they start doing crazy stuff like this, uh, and I do. Uh, and so, uh, I, you can find out about the Republican Party of Texas. We are fighting hard. To see a lot of these things change in our state, to see true diversity in our classroom, to see, uh, true education. To see, um. Choice for parents and their school options, which we should have instead of a monopoly like we have now. Um, we want to see these things in the upcoming legislative session. These are all a part of our legislative priorities, stopping. Um, you know, this pornography in classrooms is, is part of it. A lot of things, we're lowering property taxes. These are all in our top ten legislative priorities that I've been quoting here. And so you can go and to the Republican Party of Texas website, Google that. And you can find out more information there for, for things, uh, that we're involved with there.
All right. Sounds great. Well, um, I, I appreciate you joining the program. That was a crazy story, but, um, well, we'll be keeping in touch on this.
Thank you for, uh, highlighting it. It's very, very, very important for our future.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.